Good evening. This is a Greenbelt City Council work session. My name is Emmett Jordan. I'm the mayor, council.
Kristen Weaver, Mayor Portem.
Silky Pope, council.
Daniel McKinney, council member.
Jenny Pompey, council member.
Amy Neesel, council member.
Robbie Roberts, city council.
Okay, any information items?
I think this may count as an information item because it wasn't technically on the agenda, but we usually would go through the upcoming meetings because it's a regular meeting next week. So if we can consider that an information item.
Okay, and I do have an information item. City manager, do you have anything to share? Okay. Well, let me just say this. We hold these council work sessions on Mondays and Wednesdays several times a month to exchange information with community stakeholder groups to gather information from staff, advisory boards, or residents. No formal votes or decisions are taken at work sessions. These work sessions, as well as our meetings, are open to the public, except for executive sessions as authorized by state laws so residents and others can observe councils deliberations. We do strive to provide reasonable opportunities for council, for the public to voice opinions on matters being considered, so we'll pause periodically for public comment. During these times, if you're in the room and you wish to make a comment, raise your hand. After being recognized, you can go over to the podium. You need to state your name and where you live, more or less. If you are on Zoom, you can submit a question using the Q&amp;A tab at the bottom of the screen, or you can raise your virtual hand. And once again, you'll need to provide a name. We don't accept anonymous comments, and where you live, more or less. And finally, if you're watching on cable TV, or streaming on Zoom, or YouTube, or cable TV, you can always send us an email, questions@greenveltmd.gov. That's the email address. So with public comment, please limit your remarks to three minutes, and speak on one topic related to the question under consideration. And we ask that you avoid questioning the motives of others in general. Please be civil in your remarks. So here we are. This is the final review on the budget. And we've had, I believe we've had 12 work sessions leading up to this since the city manager introduced the proposed budget to city council back in March. You know, it's been interesting always as a council member to hear the presentations from staff and to actually hear the thinking from the city manager about how things are going to look in the next year. It's a very challenging time here in the United States, in the state of Maryland, Prince George's County, and Greenbelt. But the budget is balanced. And, well, we hope to kind of close things out. Tomorrow is another day, but on Monday, June the 2nd, depending on how things go tonight, we'll be set to actually approve the budget for the coming year. So Mr. Someron, how are you today?
I am well, mayor. Good evening. Good evening, mayor. Good evening, council. Good evening, residents. Thank you for your remarks, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I'm joined by our treasurer, Minister. I'm sorry. In the audience, we have Greg Vardar, director of recreations, Ter Ruby, director of planning and community development, and on line, we have Chief and Mr. Kim, Public Works Director.
Okay, thank you. You know, the budget serves as the city's operation on financial master plan. So it's aligned with council's strategic priorities and addresses community needs. So overall, I believe the proposed budget's $52,533,960. And the majority of that is the general fund, about $40 million. Expenses balanced out, about $40 million. So city manager Someron, if you want to go ahead and take us through the first overview of where we are.
Sure. We reiterate where the revenues and expenses are. Our primary focus of the majority of our work sessions has been on the general fund expenditures, and that totals $40,221,600. That's where our, the majority of our taxpayer funding, its expenses are allocated to. The other elements of our budget are the special projects and the capital improvement projects, which those are, we've also discussed all those projects. There's very variability there, particularly in the special projects that those are funded primarily through grant revenues. The capital projects, that's, those have been discussed thoroughly with council. There are some variability there as grant money and primarily grant money that becomes available. Just earlier today, I shared with council the great news that we have secured $250,000 from the American, sorry, the Maryland Energy Administration to assist us on the, with the purchase of an EV trash truck. So those are things that we'll update in the, in the capital budget. There are other projects that, or grants that we're getting news from. Just today, we received news that the county, that the county budget has, well, the committee has tentatively approved the child family services grant funding. So our cares grant that supports youth services is going to be reduced by a little over 11,000. So we'll need to absorb that, that reduction in grant funds through our budget. That's in special projects. Ms. Gaiman has already identified how we will cover that. We are already, council had already approved a allocation for the expansion of cares using ARPA money. So we'll be using those ARPA dollars to make up for that shortfall in revenue. Mr. American, talk about our budget all night, but I'll highlight or reiterate what you stated, that this budget is in alignment with council's vision and objectives for the city. It ensures fair and market wages for all of our staff. It also lowers the compensa, the wages of a newly approved collective bargaining agreement with the police union. That's a four-year agreement with the, with our police union. All those things are included in there, while also maintaining what the city of Greenbelt has been known for, and that is exceptional services.
Yeah, you know, it's really people that drive the Greenbelt budget. And I believe 70% of the budget is actually going towards salaries and personnel. 74%.
You know, Ms. Gaiman likes precise numbers, 74%.
Yeah. So, you know, talking about revenue, it's just so, so hard to really predict what's coming down the road. So I know Ms. Gaiman and Mr. Someron, you're very conservative in looking at, making projections about what was likely to happen over the next year or two, the next year. So I'm just wondering, since a lot of the budget was compiled initially with staff, December, January, and you were able to update things in March and April, do you have any thoughts about the projections based on what's happened over the past two months?
We have some, and I've shared, to share with council, since we introduced our budget, there's been a changing economic environment. We're seeing mass layoffs at the federal government. We expect some of that impact to come to the state and in our city. It's been difficult to predict exactly how much of an economic impact that will be, but we have done some contingency, contingency planning internally. The greatest risk, or one of the concerns that we have is around the property tax abatement. We have received notice from the state that we have over 60 accounts, 60 commercial properties over $2 million are being challenged, or their tax rates are being challenged. So we've calculated what that impact will be. Should all those appeals be awarded, we're looking at over $1.8 million. Our contingency plan includes drawing, pulling in funds from our cash reserves, set aside specifically for tax abatements. We have a little over 2 million in that account. So we have some cash reserves that we can absorb those appeals if they are granted, without affecting the budget as we presented. We would pull in from reserves.
Right. The initial thinking was about $750,000?
Yes, and then we read, and yes, and we reduce, and I'll let Ms. Gaiman jump in, because part of the way that we balance the budget is we looked at historicals and we were, we reduced the expense allocation towards abatements, anticipating that if it exceeded that amount, we would, we will bring in money from cash reserves.
That is correct. I don't, I'm not too worried about it because all of the abatements or abatements that are on the list that Mr. Someron is talking about, it usually takes about 18 months before they are awarded. And I have no idea where these properties are in terms of when it was submitted to the state and how far they've gone through the process. But I don't think, I'm pretty sure all of them will not hit in 2026. It'll take a couple of years before it hits. But as he said, we have the $2.1 million in reserve. We've had it for the last year, last couple of years. And so we make it a point to keep those funds available should we get an influx of abatements beyond the amount that we have in, planned in the budget. So I think we're in pretty good shape.
Right. And with the reserves, you mentioned the $2.1 million. So we've got this reserve policy that council put into place about three years ago.
That's correct.
So there's a rainy day fund.
Rainy days, budget stabilization, yes, and capital reserve.
So that 21, $2.1 million?
It is not part of those dollars. That is a separate part of money.
And that's in the, the unallocated funds?
That's correct, yes. So I think our reserve is pretty healthy, and if we don't have another pandemic or something like that, we're, we're in good shape. Yes, we're in good shape.
Right. And the other thing with revenue is, you know, we're really reliant on those property taxes, real property taxes.
Yes, absolutely, very heavily.
Yeah. And that's based on inventory?
The assessed value for, for real property and then for property taxes. It's two or three different pots of money that we receive from commercial properties and residential properties, but that's personal property. But real estate property is, is based on assessed value. Yes.
Okay, that's helpful. So I just asked about revenue. I asked about abatements. And I guess the other thing that I was kind of concerned about, that I'm not going to ask about, well, and you also explained the reserve funds. So that budget stabilization fund is something that kicks in automatically with permission of council, but the rainy day fund is, takes a super majority of council way in.
That's, that's correct. And should we, we monitor revenues on a monthly basis as we do, Ms. Gaiman does the reconciliation, the receipts. So we know how we're trending on the revenue side of things. So we, we would, we would be aware, we would see flags if we need to tap into the rainy day fund or budget stabilization. Budget stabilization fund would be appropriate, primary use would be when we're putting together the budget if we anticipate significant reductions, and we think that there are short-term economic issues that we can pull in for the budget stabilization to bring additional revenue source on a short-term basis.
Okay.
But this year, we are, we are using cash reserves to fund some operations, primarily the capital, the capital projects.
Right. Okay. If there are no general questions from council, can you maybe work us through the memo that highlights the changes, the memorandum that you shared?
Okay, so. Very sensitive. Okay, so I am highlighting the fact that on March 24th, when Mr. Someron presented the budget, we had $40,221,600 in revenue, and were proposing $40,215,900 expenditures, leaving a balance of $5,700. Since that time, I have acknowledged an error that I made that would actually reduce the budget by $15,900. And it's actually in the cares department, where I assumed an employee was a full-time employee, and he's actually less than half-time. And so those dollars, I have added back to the expenditure brother, budget. And so that reduces the, what is that, 42? Something's awry here. This is 40, 40 million, 215 minus the 1590. It brings us to $40,200,000, not the 42. I'm not sure where that came from. So, so, so at this point.
That's 40, 40 million.
It's 40 million, 40 million, and not the 42. 40 million, 221,600 for revenue, 40 million, 200,000 for expenditures, now leaving $21,600 for 2026.
Right. That's a very tight margin.
Yes, it is.
So as council thinks about modifications, there is not really much of any room to do much of anything.
No.
Which is a testament to the accuracy of what you've put together, Mr. Someron. It's quite a testament to your ability.
Yes, less than 1%.
Okay. So, I mean, we can kind of go through these sections, but council, I'm going to ask you, do you have any concerns with the various sections of the budget that we've talked about from, from all the different work sessions? I know we've got some discussion around the contributions and grants, but other than that, in your review, what do you have to ask about? Council member?
One thing that we hadn't discussed is our continued participation in PG CMA. And given the change in leadership and questionable activities that have occurred within that organization, I am considering removing that $3,200 of dues from our budget this year.
Okay, we can make a note of that, like, council member.
Sorry. I was going to bring that up as well. I, I don't really feel comfortable giving any of our city funds to an organization that has mismanaged their own finances so terribly, and not been very transparent with its membership about what happened with those funds. And I recognize that it's a small amount of money, but with the budget being so tight this year, I just feel like I would rather invest that money into our city, into our residents, and into our programming, than into an organization that frankly, just is not financially responsible.
Okay. We should make a note of that, because that sounds like something we'll need to vote on. So, so let's make that a line. Yeah, Ms. Pope.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm kind of surprised that that came up so quickly, because I was thinking about that myself, but I myself are not that involved in PG CMA. But I would, I would support it, at least to take a break, because I know the City of College Park also has taken, is taking a break from joining this organization at this time due to the issues. So I would be willing to maybe sit, sit out for one year and then revisit that next year, given the restraints we have with the budget. Yeah, I think I would be, I would be inclined to, to support Ms. Neesel's and Ms. Pompey's request.
So I'm wondering, are there some other issues within the context of the budget that you'd like to modify? Yes, please. Because we're keeping, so what I'd like to do is, you know, it looks like you've got it up on the screen, kind of keeping a running tab.
I am.
But once again, there is so little funding to work with. I really don't think we have a lot of room to do very much. Council member McKinney?
Question around just with recent changes and recent actions taken on the state government level. I know we have in our legal services, we have a line item dedicated to our MAGLEF. And I'm just wondering if you're anticipating that there may need to be any more, or less, more or less, depending upon all the things that are happening. I just don't want to undercut what we will need to do to continue to move that forward, especially since we also are identifying that that is a priority for the council as well as the city.
That's a very valid concern. We've seen the marketing for MAGLEF, by the MAGLEF team, increase significantly. Our budget on legal counsel, which is on page 131 of the budget book, we have allocated $25,000 for next year. We're trending to spend just a little bit more than half of that this year. So if we were to double our activities this year, we're still within, we're still within that, that budget line, line item. The, we're anticipating an increase in legal services on the general, general side of things. That's 80,000. So you'll see an increase from 50,000 this year to 80,000. And the primary driver of that is that the council's been very active with legislation. We're doing a city code, sorry, the recertification project, the charter review, a lot of, lot of legislative work. And we think that that's going to provide the foundations to make updates easier. We anticipate more activity that. We do have some room in there that I think if, if the activities with MAGLEF increase, we might, we might have less activity on the city legislator side of things.
That, that arrangement that we have is for, basically, it's a retainer agreement. We've been working with the legal counsel, Joe Grant.
Yes.
For a few years, and haven't really asked very much. So if that changes, you know, we are beginning to need more.
And there's some cost savings as being part of the partnership. We share the legal costs with other, with other folks. So we're not taking on such a, such a firm with such expertise all on our own.
And of course, we still have our legal issues around the fire EMS with the county.
Correct.
Good pickup, council member McKinney. Yeah, Mr. Roberts?
Well, I think if we're going to have any chance with the MAGLEF issue, then we need to be lobbying down in DC, because that's where it's going to be decided, because that's where the land is controlled, with Mark, all the property along the Parkway, is where it's going to be, you know, the feds are going to decide this, whether to put money into it. Right now, you know, they, one, they are not wanting to spend a lot of money. They're trying to cut everybody, and we all know what's going on down there. So maybe now's the time that we should be lobbying down there, saying, hey, this is just going to be another draw on the taxpayer money, but which it will. You know, they're going to expect the taxpayers to fund, you know, a good portion of their project. So that's where our money should, you know, right now, the, the money we're spending on the legal counsel, it's not getting us anywhere, because the MAGLEF people are out handing out money, you know, hand over fist. They're giving everybody money. They're lobbying everybody. If we don't do the same thing and get our message across that, you know, then we're going to be lost. So, yeah, it'd be, it's nice to have the money there for the legal counsel, and we're going to need that as well, but we have to attack it in a different way. And that's lobbying in Washington DC, because that's where the decision is going to be made. Thank you.
So as a general point, I did want to bring up the need for some additional funding for our advocacy efforts, particularly on the county, and to some extent, on the state level, because of some of the shifts that have gone on with PG CMA. The, so particularly if we, if we drop out of PG CMA for a year, we don't, well, my opinion with Ms. Pompey as the co-chair of the Legislative Committee, I thought that we were really getting some very good information from our advocate. Yep. So I.
Yes.
So I, I think we need to set aside some additional funds for that, maybe 10 to 20 thousand dollars.
Okay, we can find 3,200 of that, 10 to 20.
Just to, to, some clarity for what the mayor had said, PG CMA is a, you know, it's, it's a, like a, an organization that's under the umbrella of the Maryland Municipal League. And the, the chapter organizations like PG CMA are no longer going to be allowed to have their own lobbyists. So that's what he was sort of referring to, that we're going to sort of be losing that. Whether or not we're in PG CMA or not, we won't have that lobbyist working for us anymore.
Right. So we'll need to, to make up that difference somehow. And probably by partnering, we may be able to partner with some of our sister municipalities, which is very important. You know, I think we need to maintain a strong link with our sister municipalities throughout the county. So if we can put, you said 3,200, I want you to round up to five.
Let, let me see where I get the other two. So I know we've got that 3,200 that you want to move from PG CMA. That's 3,200 in the public officers PG CMA allocation. So we'll need to look where other, where else we can, as I mentioned, we've got that 80,000 in legal services. We can set aside a larger portion of that to be, to be advocacy services without, without affecting the budget in other areas.
Okay.
So we'll. Reduce the 80. The mayor asks for 10 to 20,000. If we do 10,000, then we just need to find 6,800.
Other thoughts from council, modifications to the budget?
Well, and this, this is a little bit of a tricky one, because I think some of the, the details are in flux, but we, we talked about the save as you throw as opposed to the, the rate increase to 336 a year that's sort of baked into the budget. I think the challenge is that, that how that works depends on how many people opt in, and there are some factors with that. So I've been trying to play around with the numbers a little bit, and I think, I think I may have, yeah, I, we have Kristen Brown here, who's the, who's, who's the expert, and I think, but I don't know, the challenging part is how to fit that in the budget when, the uncertainties, when it matters, how many people opt in to that. So, so I don't know the best way to handle that, Ms. Gaiman, in terms of, because I think the, I think a couple of things. I think the Green Ace's recommendation actually speculated a higher expectation for revenues. The, I think that the chart that they had was based on a, a rate of 350 a year, not 336, but what's in the budget is 336. So I'm trying to crunch some of the numbers here, and I don't know how, just don't know exactly how to handle that, since the numbers are so uncertain.
And there's also a timing factor.
Yes.
I think as things stand now, we could not have the new rates, whatever the rates, whatever council decides. It could not go into effect July 1.
Right.
So we'll be looking at at least several months of.
And I think.
A quarter, right.
At least, and, and, and I think based on our conversations with the, with the, with GHI, I think they would have some challenges if we, if we implement something before January 1, which means six months at the current rates. 1, which means six months at the current rates, um, and then implementing the save as you throw, which I think does, does make things challenging. So, like I said, that's something that, and I, I started digging into it and, and later than I should have, and so I'm trying to, yeah, do some, some crunching of the numbers here, but there may be other things, it may be easier to go through the contribution groups first and then come back.
But on that note, while you're on the topic of the, of the solid waste, the solid waste proposal that's in the budget anticipates an increase in collection fees of totaling $100,000. So if we delay that by six months, that our budget will be off by 50,000.
I guess that's, yeah, that's a, that's maybe a simpler way to, to think about it than what I was, I was trying to put in the, the revenues that we would get, but that's probably a simpler way to think about it, isn't it?
Okay. Well, I mean, we can pivot to, to look at the grants and contributions, if you like. Does that count as well? Okay.
Yes.
Well, let's go ahead and, uh, bring it up. Oh, there it is, right there on the screen. So we did have some input from, uh, one of our residents, former councilmember Jay Davis. She had some strong opinions and made some suggestions about the process. And, and you know, we, we've been talking about this process for a while, particularly for the advisory boards, how to, to make funding available to any of the advisory boards, uh, and at the same time, uh, keeping a handle on the, the amount of money that that is allocated for those purposes. Some sort of a competitive process is what we've talked about, and I don't think we quite got there this year in terms of communicating that to all of the advisory boards.
We, we, we asked for their, their proposals, their budgets, and we treated them as, as an extension of the government. So the scrutiny, if you will, or the evaluation process was limited to more of a staff and staff liaison level of those budgets. Not, not, um, obviously not, doesn't meet the Jay Davis standard, um, but given the, the timeframe that we put together budget, given the historical, uh, na, the, the history of how the budgets are allocated for the advisory boards, it's an improvement.
It's a step in the right direction.
Yeah.
So in the proposed, uh, budget, you kind of put all the money in miscellaneous, and then you left it up to, to council to kind of hear, hear the various requests. And, uh, some of the advisory boards put in very specific requests for funding, others with, also with, uh, with a report on what they spent the money on last year, which is naturally what you would want to have if, if a group is coming and asking again for funding, you want to know what happened last year. Uh, so some of the advisory boards just put in a request without really providing that background information, and a couple of the advisory boards just, uh, put in a request. So money is really, really tight this year, and, uh, I don't know if I have this right in my calculations, but it looks like, uh, in the, the spreadsheet that we had received for the advisory boards, there was a total of, uh, 46,900 dollars. Is that correct? This is just the advisory boards.
Oh, just.
Oh, it's just the advisory boards.
45,900, that's correct.
45,900. Okay. Ms. Pope?
What's that, the amount? Okay, so the, the total amount asked for was that 271, and the amount that was suggested or was proposed, maybe it was down to 140?
That's correct, with the, is this on?
My phone's not on it, I might, my thing was not. So I just wondered, so the, the, the total amount that was asked for by all the, the groups came up to 271,800, right?
That is correct.
And, but, um, the, the proposed grants, um, after the deductions, because most of them got like 80% of what, what they asked, came down to 131, right? So from 271,800, we're now actually at 140,800, if everyone gets what was suggested by the panel.
By the panel, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. And did Meals on Wheels not get any?
We, we have not populated anybody with any dollars. We waited, yeah, until you make a decision.
Okay, I've just seen a zero, it's by Meals on Wheels, Washington Ear, and I know that those two organizations always get money from us, so I'm just wondering.
Well, you know, uh, food security is an incredibly, uh, big issue, and, uh, Meals on Wheels actually services a, a large number of residents here in Greenbelt, and they also have a large number of volunteers. So I, I would propose that we do fund them.
I do too.
At the amount.
And Washington Ear as well.
Washington Ear, was that a thousand dollars?
1,500.
1,500. Was that an increase or is that the same amount?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I misread it. The, the, the Washington Ear's a thousand dollars, last year, Gives was 1,500.
Right.
That was last year's request.
Last year, well, so was the prior two years. It's been the same.
Because we increased it like two years or three years ago during COVID, but I would suggest that we put that back in, I mean, as it, as it was, no, no additional, but where we left off for both organizations.
What, what do you mean when you left off, and the number it is in 2025?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sort of 1,500 and a thousand, right?
Okay, so this year in 2025, Gives received 1,500, Meals on Wheels 1, sorry, the Meals on Wheels 5,000 and Washington Ear 1,000. And you're proposing to keep them at the same level as the 2025?
See, I don't see the numbers here, I see Meals on Wheels zero, I see Washington Ear zero. And I just heard that one was 1,500, one was 1,000 last year, so what was it?
That's what it was.
And I'm sorry.
Gives is 1,500.
1,500.
Gives, and that has been the case going back to 2022.
Okay.
They receive 1,500.
Got it.
For Washington Ear in 2022, they receive a thousand dollars, 23,000, 24, 1,000, 25, 1,000.
Okay, so 1,000 and a 1,500.
That's right.
And 5,000.
Mr. Roberts may have had.
Meals on Wheels.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts, would you like to?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that.
Sorry.
Should, uh, would it be helpful if we shared the streets?
Maybe. That was going to be my suggestion, is that you put that up.
I, I just want to say that I, uh, I am not in favor of going down this road of handing out money to boards and committees. They're there to give us advice not to spend our taxpayers' money, because that's a bottomless pit, we can just spend more and more and more money. And, you know, we went for, uh, you know, many, 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 many years in the city with boards and committees, and they didn't spend money. They did their job and gave us the advice we needed. So far as I'm concerned, you need to strike any money for boards and committees, uh, I would be in favor of giving, uh, entities like the, the Washington Ear and, and the rest of them a little more money, because right now they especially need it because, uh, they've been hit hard by the administration and the things that are going on there. The boards and committees, they don't need our money, they don't need the taxpayers' money.
Yeah, you know what, I hear you, Mr. Roberts. Uh, some of the committees that are doing, uh, particularly the Advisory Committee on Education, we, uh, provide them with grants to supplement, uh, for the teachers to do projects that are not supported by the, uh, public school system, and also for, uh, small scholarships for, uh, students that are doing a good job. So, uh, I, I definitely would want to support ACE. And I think that, I just think we should have a pool of, of funds, I don't know how much, maybe less than, than what we've allocated this year, maybe that same amount, but I think if an advisory group has a good idea, and they, they have a project that they want to work on, you know, I think that we should seriously consider funding it. Now granted, the process could be, perhaps should be, a lot more competitive, just a, a fixed amount of money, but I, I strongly believe that, that these people who are serving on the advisory boards have very specialized knowledge, and, you know, some of the ideas that they come up with are worthy of funding.
I'm running for city council, I think I can get them done.
Okay, Mayor Portem.
Yeah, and I think that's all well and good, but I think that's a plan for next year, not a plan for this year. Um, and we just need to actually talk about that in November, December, before we start the process, not try to implement that, um, sort of in the midst of it, as we're trying to deal with right now.
Are you referring to Mr. Roberts?
No, I'm referring to your idea. I think that's something that, that doesn't work very well right now, because we already have some requests that have come in, and so we need to deal with those. And then, uh, if we want to change the process for the advisory boards and committees for next year, we need to do it with more lead time and not try to do it in the middle of the budget process.
Yeah, I hear what you say, but, you know, I've brought this up repeatedly, year after year, so.
Well, um, we need to remember it in November, um, and, and not in March.
So let's continue to, if it's council's will, these, uh, grants to the groups, Gives, Meals on Wheels, Washington Ear, and the Refugee Assistant Program.
I think that's in a different, that's in a different place now.
No, the refugee.
It, it's not under grants, it's under, it's up above, under, um, yeah, under contrib, under, um, contributions recognition, so it's not under grants anymore. But I, but, but I think, I don't have any objection with, with Ms. Pope's recommendation of using the same numbers as last year for Gives, Meals on Wheels, and Washington Ear.
Okay, so I will populate those.
Okay.
I think Ms. Neesils has her answer.
Uh, Councilmember Neesil.
Thank you. I just have a question about Washington Ear. Historically, have they requested funds from us, or do we know what happens with these funds?
Yeah, they, they have.
Washington Ear, I'm sorry.
They, they actually have, and somehow in the last year, uh, the communication didn't seem to go out. They usually come in person and actually make a presentation. Uh, we've got several readers, volunteers that read, they actually read the Greenbelt News Review, uh, over the year.
And we know for certain that that will be continuing this coming year?
Yeah, I would assume that it is.
I just, it concerns me to be awarding monies to an organization that has not given us a plan for the coming fiscal year.
Well, but what they do is that they'll read anything, so any, any Greenbelter can call them up and say, I want to hear this book, or this magazine, whatever it is, and they'll read it for them. So it's a ver, it's a valuable asset to our residents, and they, they deserve the money.
And I, I think there was maybe an administrative hiccup, because I, I'm not sure that Meals on Wheels and Washington Ear got the word that they needed to come in, because they ordinarily do come in.
Okay, so they just didn't respond?
No response.
Like they asked.
No, well, it sounds like they did, it sounds like the request was made.
My understanding is that, um, this one of the, the email went out to all, all of these folks in the advisory groups and the grants, and we asked for, um, what they wanted to do for this year, for '26, and some we heard back from, others we did not. This is one that we did not hear back from.
Ms. Pope?
So my question is that, and we just had an issue with emails, et cetera, going out, and they may have not been updated, and I know that several people on those particular uh, contribution groups are elderly and, you know, so things can happen, so I'm just wondering, did anything come back? Did an email bounce back? Who's monitoring, uh, this? And I understand Ms. Neesil's concern that, you know, if we don't hear anything, why should we give them money? On the other hand, I don't want to, like, Washington Ear is a very important group, they read everything, they just don't read the Greenbelt News Review, they read all kinds of things to, to people who can't see, right? So that's an important, um, mission that they're having, and I'm very surprised that they're not here. And Meals on Wheels, we know that they deliver food to residents here in Greenbelt, uh, a very large population, actually just in Greenwich House. Um, so I think that there might be some hiccups, so I, you know, I don't want to not give them anything, because I do want that, but I think maybe for next year, like, like we discussed, we do, we do need to come up with a plan, how to better this, this, um, this process.
So, no, Nick.
Okay. Well, let's move, uh, back to the advisory groups. Can we take a look at that page again? And I'm going to suggest, you know, given that funding is very, very tight, for the ones, for any, perhaps any new request, we can just not fund any new request.
I don't think we have any new requests, I think these are all, but.
Okay.
And I'm not sure that I would agree with doing it that way.
Okay, well, how would you suggest that we do it?
I, well, I think going through and, 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 uh, adjusting ones that, looking at the, the, the impact and the people they impact, and do they serve, uh, part, parts of the city that others don't serve, or do they serve a need that is not served in other ways? I think that's, that's the way I would make the judgment, if we can't, yeah.
And from a process perspective, could I advise we start at the top, and just work our way down the list in, in that order?
Huh. What a novel idea.
And if I could just remind you, um, what has been requested by the recognition groups are on, in column D's, on the, on the right-hand column, and whatever you decide, I will put in the, in this column here, and it should calculate. So these are the amounts that were brought for, again, from the recognition groups.
Yeah, and you know, I, I want to thank, uh, Mr. Varda, who was here in the room, for his, uh, his work, uh, with the, uh, review committees, actually looking through each of these proposals, and I put a lot of stock into their recommendations, so I, I'm not inclined to, to deviate very much from the recommendations. I don't know, and, and, Mr. Varda, I don't know if you'd like to say anything? Actually, you can, you can come to the table if you want, Rick. I don't think it's on. Can I push that button? Use this one. Okay, now I'm good. Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, thanks, uh, thanks to the grant review panel, uh, they are, uh, current board or committee members who took up this added responsibility. Very time-consuming to review all the applications, so, uh, they put in a lot of time and a lot of effort into this. Um, the initial budget was 120,400 dollars. The qualifying grant requests were 153, 375 dollars. So we had to, uh, come up with a way to, uh, trim that amount back to the 120,000. So that's the, uh, report that you received, the last two recognition group meetings. Okay, well, thank you very much. You're welcome. So why don't we go ahead, uh, for the sake of moving forward, populate, uh, that section with, uh, the recommendations of, uh, the review panels, and I'd like to give council an opportunity, if, if you feel any of these need to be amended or changed or modified, more money, less money, now's the time to speak up.
I don't think we have much more to give, so I.
And Ms. Pope?
I do think that, you know, I think if we can, if we can give the recommended amounts, I think we should, because each of these organizations have a great value to our city, and those are services that we cannot provide without those groups. So if we can, maybe not what was requested, but was suggested or recommended, I would agree with that. I also would just put a lot of value of, if we're spending this taxpayers' money, that taxpayer money that comes from, from property taxes that our residents pay, then we need to make sure that we're keeping those funds in the city and make good usage of our residents and for our public facilities that, that everyone uses.
Uh, thank you. Mayor Portem?
Yeah, so I think one, one change that I suggested, um, that I think gives us a tiny bit of wiggle room, and I was trying to pull up the, that, that, the, the table that had the recommendations, uh, from the, uh, the, the committee, was that while I think that the Refugee Act Committee is doing good work, I think the money really can't be used for, I think, what it seems like their primary purpose is, that to help people overseas, and it's really only helping, like, directly helping a, a very small number of people in the city. So although that they asked for a significant amount more this year than they did last year, that was my recommendation when we discussed it before, um, to give them the same amount they got last year, and not the added amount that they asked for, just because it doesn't seem like the, although again, it's a good cause and very important, not although again, it's a good cause and very important, not, not necessarily the best use of, of taxpayer funds in this case, just because it doesn't have a broad impact in the city and really is ways, should be fundraised in other ways. So I believe that the, um, the rec, the, the, uh, uh, review panel, based on their percentage recommendation, would have allocated them twelve thousand, five hundred. But I would propose giving them the same amount we gave them last year, which is only four thousand, which I think, uh, Mr. Jervasi said there were, I think, two families still here, which is, actually works out to be about the same as we give people out of the Gila, um, the Gila Fund, twenty-five hundred. So I think that's justifiable. But that gives us seven, seven thousand, five hundred to move around to other places.
Right.
And still stay within that proposed award amount.
Okay, I just want to remind, I just would like to remind council of the process. This is a work session. So we're kind of trying to come to a consensus, but ultimately, uh, next Monday, when we approve the budget, we'll kind of go through and, uh, vote on each section. So that's another opportunity if there's not a strong consensus. So do you want to fill that in on the, the sheet?
And I, I, I want to second, uh, Mayor Protem's, um, comments. It is, it is an important, um, project that you're doing and, and I appreciate it. And, you know, I think many of us help in any way on a private level, but, um, given the constraints, and I, I would agree with that. And I, but I also think, like, if we have the people here in the city, then we also want to help to take care of them, of course. I mean, that's, that's a given.
Well, what, what's council's will on this? We're kind of working through this. So I, I don't think it should be a back and forth necessarily, but, you know, I do certainly want to give, uh, people that are here the opportunity to speak. What, what should we do?
I think it's an, it, I, I would like to hear some comments, not, you know, I mean, we, we really have to work through this budget so we can, we can vote on it on Monday, of course. And, um, I think if we, we hear someone else out and encounter on that, it's, it's unfortunate that everybody's here to have that opportunity. So, um, I mean, I'm okay with listening to some comments, but I just don't want to get this into a, a bigger.
Back and forth.
Back and forth discussion.
Okay, is it okay, uh, for me to recognize the individual that's here in the room? To speak?
I believe that since not everyone is here, nor was everyone invited. Since this wasn't meant to be a back and forth, not everyone who wanted funding is here. They were here during their work sessions, which is when Mr. Jervasi had the chance to speak as well. Um, so I would not want to engage in a back and forth at this time.
And perhaps when we pause for public comment, anyone who's in the room can have a couple of minutes to say whatever they like. But I don't think it should be a back and forth. Uh, Ms. McKenna, you had your hand up before?
Yes, thank you. Um, it's actually a separate question. I was also going through and I was just trying to do some quick calculations on, um, there are some groups that even though we have less in the budget, are still getting an increase from what they received last year because it was based on the request for this year. So they may have asked for an increased amount. And so I think it's something to think about as we're making our consideration as well. Because if we're taking into account where basically we have less funds, in this current budget, budget year, should we actually be giving more or should we be giving the same amount? Does that make sense?
It makes sense. I, I think it depends, you know, because some of these, these, uh, grant requests were for projects and others were for operating support, so.
Yes, so I'll, you know, as an example, um, it's, it's not a lot. And, and once again, I'm just trying to make sure we're keeping a, a level playing field for everybody just because we don't have a whole lot of wiggle room in the budget, right? So if we need to start from the same place. So, for example, the concert band received thirty-six hundred dollars last year. Um, their request for it is thirty-eight hundred this year. And I believe, you know, I think they were talking about, um, the hiring of a band director, which is wonderful. But it all, it is an increase. It's a slight increase. It's about six percent of an increase. So I just think we need to take the same approach for everybody. If, if we are going to increase the allocated amount, we should be clear about why we're giving an increased amount if most organizations are, are getting a decreased amount.
I mean, then we should, if they have not been here, we should give the, whatever was last given.
Correct.
I agree with that. Yes.
Well, yeah, I, I'm sorry. Mr. Roberts, please.
Well, I just wanted to say that historically, we have allowed residents to come to the, the final budget meeting to participate and to speak on issues. So I don't think it's, it's not unusual. And it, it should be allowed because these are residents of Greenbelt. They are the taxpayers. And they should have a, a voice all through the process, not on just one day. So if someone is here and they need to speak, then I, they should be allowed to. And I think, you know, if we're not going to spend that money on PG CMA, uh, we can use that to, um, help some of our other, uh, groups that need the money, uh, with that money.
To, uh, Councilmember McKenna, I, I hear what you're saying. I'll say this again. I, I'll say this again. I, I put a lot of faith, a lot of stock in, in the recommendations from the review panels. So, uh, on the one hand, uh, it's, it's tempting to kind of weigh in and, you know, give the same amount as last year or less. But, uh, you know, the reason why we have review panels is to, you know, give us information and to make recommendations and so on. I'm not inclined to vary too much from what's been recommended. Uh, Mayor Protem?
Well, I think another factor to consider is some of these groups where it's the operating budget versus others where it's very specific projects. And it's possible that if we don't give the allocation, they may not be able to do the project. Um, and I was actually incorrect. There was one new, uh, first-time applicant. It was actually Gate. But that was, I believe, the only one that was, that was a, um, new first-time, uh, applicant. But I do worry, for example, in that case, that if they, it, it, for, for something that's a very specific project with a very specific budget, if they don't get the full amount, are they going to be able to do that project? And that seems, whereas something where it's an operating budget, they may be able to move other things around. Um, so I guess I would propose, um, uh, and I think the other ones that are the project grants are Friends of the New Deal Cafe and the, um, Greenbelt Business Alliance. Now, the Greenbelt Business Alliance asked for a little bit more. They asked for five thousand. I guess my suggestion would be with some of the, uh, some of the, the, the seven thousand, five hundred room there to, uh, maybe give Gate and Fonca the full amount because they requested so little overall. Um, and those are project grants that seem like they might have trouble completing the project if they don't have the full amount that they asked for. I think the, um, Business Alliance seems a little bit more, that is sort of a, I mean, it's a, they can, they can change their ticket prices, their charging ticket.
They can raise some funds.
They could raise some funds for that, so I'd be less worried about that one. So I think I would propose, um, giving, uh, Gate the full, thirty-three hundred that they requested and Friends of the New Deal Cafe, the full three thousand that they requested.
Okay, let's, uh, put that on spreadsheet. Uh, Ms. Gaiman? Thirty-three, I think. Uh, any other suggestions? Well, why don't we pause at this time and take some public comment? Uh, yes, Ms. Gaiman?
Before we do that, I just want to note, um, on two of these, um, for Greenbelt Arts Center, that should be thirty-four thousand, six hundred. And the space should be twenty-four thousand and not twenty-four hundred. So I've made that correction up on the, on the screen so that you could see it.
What'd you say, Ms. Pope?
I think they got twenty last year.
And that's for operating?
Yes.
And this year it's twenty-five?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four thousand for the space.
I don't know. I think I would go back to what we passed on last year, quite honestly.
I think an argument in favor of that one is that is one of the organizations that serves the most individuals.
It does, and I, and I recognize that. And I recognize that. And, but I think we, we can pretty much say that about many others as well. Um, and I'm not want to punish one and not the other. That's not my, you know, but we're gonna have to come to some kind of consensus on this budget, so.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think they, they say that they had about over four thousand, four hundred individual visits from Greenbelt residents, which I think is higher than any of the other groups that are requesting one.
And I read that, and I know that, and I see that, yes. So let's not make me out to be a bad person because I just recommend that, uh, you know.
I'm just saying, I, they have the most, I, I disagree with that change because I think they have, they serve the most, they, they serve the most residents based on the reports that we have from all of the groups.
You know, I think visibility is a factor. I mean, there are them all, so a lot of people are asking.
Okay.
So, um,
suggestion.
And let's see, so, Ms. Gaiman, the ideal number for the total contributions that we've got, it's one oh four nine hundred right now?
Right now, yes.
And what is our goal to round this out so that it balances out?
Greg, I was hoping you'd answer that question.
Turn it on, turn it on. Sorry. The, the, uh, the budgeted amount is a hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred dollars.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So let's pause at this time for a public comment, uh, three minutes. Is there anybody in the room that wishes to speak? Yes, Mr. Jervasi.
Okay. All right. Uh, so when we filled out the application, uh, we just went with the rentals. Uh, we've also helped, uh, like a couple of Afghan families. We've helped, uh, various other, uh, refugees, immigrants kind of situation. That's what we're here for. That's what we intended for city money and, and match for our budget for city money. It doesn't really affect our overseas money. Uh, as far as, uh, um, the current situation, Lutheran Social Services is who we've been working with for three years. They're located on Greenway, uh, Center Drive. They actually sent us the second refugee, uh, individual and then her family. We were going to sponsor her daughter, uh, but, uh, uh, that's another story. But, um, the, they are now pretty much, I would say, defunct. Uh, their funding has been completely cut off. Uh, they are staffed by volunteers, uh, and they really can't help very many people. But they've always, we, we've been working with them for, like I say, three years. And so I think part of this money that we're requesting is to pick up the slack and that's for, there's a lot of individual, uh, docu- documented and undocumented immigrants. You can call them refugees, you can call them whatever, but they're people that need our help. And that's part of what we're looking to do. I didn't make us write that in the operating grant because at the time, when we filled it out, uh, the federal government hadn't cut off all aid to, you know, groups like LSS, not only them, but they, you know, they deal with a lot of people. Uh, you know, we, I've been to functions there. There's hundreds of local, and local immigrants, local refugees. So that's, I just wanted to make that point, that we're not specifically on two households, two families. But we're specifically assisting in a number of ways when they come, when we come across them. Okay?
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Orleans?
What I may think of any of the recipients of granting contribution is irrelevant. I'm going to assume that most of them, uh, do good work and, uh, don't, uh, necessarily spend the con, the amount of money allocated to them by council. It's possible that expenditures elsewhere in the budget could be reduced or even eliminated, uh, thereby printing up, uh, at least that much money, uh, for purposes of, uh, providing, uh, grant and contribution at the requested level, uh, to the various groups making the requests. Uh, it's been suggested again this year that there's one, uh, allocation in the budget, an expenditure in the budget, that being management of Greenridge House, that's wholly unnecessary. It's upwards of eighty K. And, uh, since all the salaries of that contractor's employees are paid by the city and since all the expenses, including paper clips, uh, and all larger capital costs are paid by the city, paying them in excess of eighty thousand dollars to manage the property, which they may be doing managing it, that's, they have the contract to do that. But we're paying all the costs. So that's an example where the city could save that much, eighty, in excess of eighty thousand, and maybe not allocating that eighty thousand to the various recipients of, who've requested funds, but certainly some of it. And those that are doing good work would benefit from a fuller alloc, alloc, allocation from councils and apparently they're not going to get. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. So we've been talking about the Contributions Recognition Section. Are there any additional comments on the section, you know, based on what we've got penciled in? Uh, Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I, just one note. I think, Ms. Gaiman, can you scroll up a minute? I think that the Greenbelt Orchestra on the, up, up a little bit.
That's the concert band, is it not?
Uh.
At the top of the page.
Oh, the top, okay. Yeah. Sorry. Sorry, the con, yes, the concert band I was referring to. Um, uh, I think in the, um, in the notation from the, uh, board, I think it was actually a recommendation. Oh, no, am I looking at the wrong one? No, never mind. I am looking at the orchestra.
The orchestra, yes, this one came by letter.
Yeah, because it's, okay, because it's thirty-seven hundred versus thirty-eight hundred. And I, I thought that, I, I thought they had gotten mixed up, but no, that was my mistake. Sorry.
And the, the concert band is a contribution, uh, a recognition group. However, they do not apply for a grant through this process.
I think the other thing that I would suggest in this section, because I know we also had, and, uh, some additional request from the Reparations Commission, that I don't know that otherwise we, we have space for, um, I think they asked for an additional six thousand.
That's correct.
So I think I would suggest, um, because it looks like we still have some space if, if we're looking for one-twenty there for the reparate, at least some portion of that, um, i- if not the full six thousand, but at least giving them, uh, a bit more of their request because I think that's really important work.
I'd be okay with that.
They are in there for twenty, uh, twenty, twenty-three.
Well, did they, did they come back, um, and revise the budget? Because one of the larger line items on there was for, um, transcription of the oral histories. And we had talked about that there may be services that could be a lot cheaper, that are AI-driven and could report on their own. And so I, I know it was at least a couple of thousand that was included in that. So that might be part of the additional six thousand. I just don't know if that was the, the increased amount.
So we gave them, uh, twenty last year?
Gave them thirty last year?
Thirty last year, I'm sorry, thirty.
Thirty last year, yes.
And the proposal is thirty-six?
I think.
Revised proposal is.
Twenty-nine, I, I'm sorry.
The revised proposal is twenty-nine. The initial proposal was for twenty-three thousand and that proposal, uh, was submitted prior to us submitting the budget to council. So that's why that twenty-three thousand number is there. Since that initial submission of the proposal, they. Since that initial submission of the proposal, they updated their budget request to twenty-nine thousand. They presented that to council, and this is, that meeting, the feedback was provided about getting the AI transcription service. They have not updated their budget since that twenty-nine thousand submission.
So then if they actually did go that route, the twenty-three thousand could actually meet. Because I don't know if that additional six thousand is just for the transcription services.
It's possible. I don't know how, how the inside working of how they plan to do the transcription. Are they gonna hire someone to do that? I think any transcription service, it requires a human being to double-check it.
There needs to be something, but it doesn't mean, I think what I thought I heard them saying was that that person was literally transcribing everything. So if they are able to take out a person, a portion of that through an AI-generated transcription, but then still have a human to validate the transcription, you can save some money.
So are you recommending maybe twenty-four? Is that what you're saying?
I just want to know what, if we could find out what the additional, just validate what the additional cost was, and then see if there's a possibility that that could be fulfilled through that mechanism. So then they're still doing the service that they intended to do, because we do need to have that recorded and reported, though. Try to look at options.
I have their revised budget from twelve, of the twenty-nine thousand. It's five items. So it's hard to figure out what's gonna be a technology expense versus a salary expense. The line item for six thousand just says transcription services for all oral histories, six thousand, so.
Well, I would like to add, so maybe not, maybe half of that, so up to twenty-six thousand, so I would like, and we can vote out in on Monday, but that would be one that I would like to have on the list to vote for an additional three thousand for the reparations commission and sort of split the difference.
I'd be more comfortable with rounding at twenty-five. I'd like to, if there's some additional information, the transcription number seems like a very round estimate of what it might cost, so it'd be nice to have some additional information.
So twenty, so twenty-five and twenty-six, out of twenty-six.
I'm thinking that there may be some grant funding out there.
I'm not sure it's worth quibbling over that different amount, but I am willing to, I am willing to accede to the, to an increase of two thousand in the reparations commission budget to vote on on Monday up to twenty-five thousand. And yes, we can vote out in on Monday.
Okay. I put twenty-five in, twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, budgeting is such a creative act. It's a roadmap. Okay, so if there are no further suggestions, oh, I'm sorry, councilmember.
Yes, thank you. So I would like to, thank you. I'd like to suggest that we, I would like to see the space get the full funding they requested. They provide so many services to this community. It's an organization that is growing. And to me, the thing that's most important is they are providing services in Greenbelt West that we cannot and do not provide over there. I mean, like real, like, you know, music classes, exercise classes, sewing classes. I mean, just like so much stuff that we can't as a city provide, and this goes to a point that Mr. Varda makes every year, is that these recognition groups do stuff that we can't do as a city, and that's so hugely valuable to us. Like, we could never afford to do what the space does with, you know, the city could never afford to do everything that the space does in Greenbelt West. And I feel like any way we can support having more enriching activities for our residents over there, we should do that. So that's my pitch for them.
I'll say it again. You know, we can sit here for a couple of hours and kind of go through each one of these groups individually, and they all have wonderful programs and serve so many unmet needs in the city. My personal inclination is to actually put a lot of faith in the review panel and their judgments about what can be the best use of the funds. You were suggesting another, how much, twenty-four is down here, you're suggesting thirty or something?
I think, is that what they requested, thirty?
Yeah, that's what I'm suggesting. I'm happy to vote on that, too, in the meeting.
Yeah, we just add that to the list to vote on.
And there was feedback from the review panel on that request?
Yes, the review panel, the applicant program, they're believed to have significant and/or lasting impact on the individuals served directly. There is a need to diversify revenue to continue to provide the much-needed high-quality programming.
So they're suggesting diversifying the revenue sources for the space. Okay, Mayor Protem?
Um.
And we, I would like to, go ahead.
So my last, my last comment is, we don't have CERT and CART listed here, but we did, did we not get requests from them?
It's down, it's further down on the page.
Right, but they have zeros in them. Were they, I mean, they're usually a thousand or fifteen hundred?
I saw it, I saw it though somewhere. Where did I see it? Was it a thousand, right?
I think they must have come in after.
They did. They came in on the day of the.
CERT is.
Fifteen hundred. Fifteen hundred for CART and fifteen hundred for CERT. And yes, those came in at the, at the time of the work session.
Had a meeting, maybe an hour before. Councilmember, please.
Can I ask Mr. Varda, can you share again the criteria and how you evaluated each, just so that we have it on the record for the public? And in addition to that, were you, was there a comparison in that evaluation to the previous year's contribution from the budget to these groups?
There was not a comparison to the previous years, though the application does ask for financials for the current year and the estimated for the following year as well. So there's three years of numbers on the application.
Oh, okay, three years history.
But does that go into?
That is, that is, the grant review panel does see that, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And what are the other criteria?
Well, so the, basically you have project grant and operating grants. And the eligibility, eligible, the project grants are basically festivals, tournaments. Artists and residencies are specific community services. And then the operating grant are things like salaries and wages, contractual services, facility rent utilities, things like that. I don't know if that's the question you're asking or not.
Yeah, I guess, is, are any of those criteria weighted more heavily than others?
No.
Okay.
The applications are graded on a whole, the service they bring to the community, how many people are they serving in the community, things like that.
So there's an application?
Yes.
There's five or so. How many people are on the panel?
We asked for five from five different advisory boards slash committees. This year we had three, three people served on the committee.
So they each scored each of the applications independently, then they came together in a group and discussed them? They have this background information on financials. So it's a pretty thorough process.
Correct. They get the applications about a month in advance. We have a, they score them, then we come together and discuss them, then they re-score them. They submit their, as a group, and then they submit their scores, and then we compile everything together.
It's a good process. Ms. Pope?
Yes, thank you. So I just wanted to repeat at the very beginning, I said that all these groups are very important to us because a lot of these services, a lot of these things that the groups are doing, we are not, the city is just not equipped to do so, right? So I made that very clear. I also said that I am in favor of the recommendations that were given to us. If we can make that happen, then the recommendations, I think that's the way we should go. I think at this time, we're, I feel like, you know, we're picking and choosing and for various reasons, and, and, you know, I don't want to say, well, we'll give this group what they ask for, this group will, I think if we can just keep it clean and provide the amounts that were suggested, I think that's the way that I would like to go. And I understand that a lot of, a lot of, a lot of things we can't, the city can't do without these groups, and I said that, you know, like, like the space, they do a wonderful job. You know, Shamar Hicks does excellent work and serves a lot of Greenbelt people, that's correct. But so do others as well. So I just wanted to keep it nice and clean and fair. So that's, that's how I'm gonna look at this budget, and that's, that's what I prefer to do.
Okay, councilmember Diesel.
If I could offer a little bit of a counterpoint, I see our duty here in this work session and when we passed the budget on Monday to take out of the kind of silo in which each of these applications was considered and consider the budget holistically. And so whereas there are many organizations that requested large amounts, and then they were weighted at a certain amount, I think that we now have to look at those kind of across the board and determine which ones actually deserve funding or not. So as, I think that the fairness comes from the grant review process, and we have to actually do the nitty-gritty decisions. And that does seem unfair, but some of what we do has to be.
Well, thank you. Your point's well taken. So are there any additional suggestions on this section? If not, I'd like to kind of move down to the grants. We talked about the grants a bit, so that section is populated as well. What else is on this page? Oh, the advisory boards. So in filling in CERT and CART, I have to say this, you know, CART and CERT have not been very active in the past year, past couple of years, and I know they have some needs.
Yeah, they have needs, like the trailer.
Trailer, yeah.
Which we got separately, right?
It's already funded.
Yeah.
The trailer's already funded, but it hasn't arrived because there were some little bit of, there were some hiccups with delivery costs, et cetera.
Okay, so.
They have been active, I'm sorry, but they have been active. They've been at every Labor Day, they have been at every.
Fourth of July.
Fourth of July, they have been at all the major functions, they have been in attendance.
Okay. Hey, so looking at the grand total for the page, where are we now? Because I think we may have freed up a few resources that can be used in other places in the budget if necessary. And, you know, I just think that it's important for council to have a little bit of funding to work with throughout the year in case an emergency comes up, which happens every year.
To your question about what the total is, Ms. Gaiman has the sheet populated. The, we haven't heard on all the groups, so I think we're making some assumptions here. You've made some adjustments on some of the groups, some you haven't discussed. So the numbers that were to be carried over would be what the recommendation is from the.
Okay, could you scroll up on the page to those groups that we have not addressed?
The mayor's asking for a total so that the council is aware of what money is available to.
Yeah, that's where I was.
Yeah, so the total for this, this area is two hundred and seventy-one, and your total is adding up above that.
Because we added the third thing that wasn't there before. I like to recalculate this. Eighty-nine. Maybe. Forty-nine. So of the two seventy-one eight hundred, you've awarded one sixty-seven six hundred, there's a hundred and four, two hundred left, if this is correct.
Okay, very good, very good. Okay, so.
That, that seems odd that we have that much left.
I'm just wondering if you include.
Something is odd. Oh, you know what? This is in here. The one oh four is in here.
I was willing to accept that we got an extra one for him. Okay.
Well, I was gonna say, we can use that to pay for the composting, right? But I don't think we actually have that much money in this budget.
This assumes that you're gonna keep the balance. Let me take this out and see what happens.
Gaiman, you know, you're doing a fantastic job, but, so I'm just wondering if you take the additions and the subtractions that we've just made, discussed, is that gonna be a positive or a negative?
Yeah, that's what, yeah, I'm thinking it is because. Eleven, eleven eight hundred for the first section. One oh four nine hundred for the second section.
That doesn't include adjusting the amount for the space, though.
The space is still at twenty-four thousand. Did you want to?
I think, I think Ms. Pompey wanted to add that as something to vote on.
Oh, yeah, okay, sorry.
Is that something we're voting on separately on Monday?
Yeah, we'll pull it out of the resolution and vote on it separately.
We usually don't. So we're switching things around a little bit, yeah?
Yeah, all of these will be voted on Monday.
Each section, each section.
Right, but the problem becomes when we're doing, okay, all right.
And then seventy-five thou, seventy-five hundred. And then five, fifty thousand nine hundred.
Fifty thousand.
Mm-hmm, this advisory group, too.
Okay, so one sixty-seven. Sixty-eight. Four. I've just added it on my head.
If there's four, I get one eighty-one, one hundred.
So you have a hundred and ten thousand.
Mm-hmm. Where's the, okay, eleven thousand eight hundred first.
Eleven thousand eight hundred.
That's where the coaches and the concert, that was not there before.
Okay.
And then. Check this formula. Okay, it's taking everything up, so one ten nine hundred.
One ten nine hundred.
Check this formula.
I have more fingers, I could probably help.
That's seven five.
Yep, seventy-five, just checking formulas. And then.
So you're at one thirty, two hundred.
And then I'm checking this formula as well. That's correct, fifty thousand nine hundred.
You're at one eighty-one.
One eighty-one hundred, that's what I have. And now, the difference is, last year, under miscellaneous ninety-nine, there was thirty thou, there was thirty-six thousand five hundred for council to award, so I think we should.
I think we should keep.
Put that back in as well.
Yes.
Yes, okay, there we go. That's why we have so much.
So that would put you at?
So now we're at two seventeen six hundred. Okay, fifty-four two hundred, fifty-four thousand two hundred. The original budget was two seventy-one eight hundred. We just awarded two seventeen six hundred. The balance is fifty-four thousand two hundred left.
Okay, councilmember McKinnon?
This is, again, a separate question from the recognition groups, but is there any risk that this whole conversation with Pepco and streetlights could result in us needing to pay for streetlights in this current year? And if so, is that, could that be covered in our reserves? I just know that that could potentially be a large number. I'm just trying to make sure we're mitigating risks.
The answer is yes, in the reserves, yes.
Yes, and definitely from the reserves. We have reserves that we could cover, depending on what the final purchase price would be.
Right.
If tankos estimates for. If Tancos estimates for Hightsville is close to what ours would be, we can fund it entirely from our reserves.
Right.
There's also a cost savings that is generated if we were to move to LED conversion right away.
Okay.
Additionally, we had, back in October of 2024, we had negotiated a refund, a credit to the city to come back in an amount of 87,000.
Okay.
We've had some challenges with that recently because state highway administration rejected our rejection of their lights. So we rejected all state highway lights, they came back and said they're not taking responsibility. So it's put us in a very difficult position because we had an agreement with Pepco in October of last year and we had negotiated a refund going back three years. Now Pepco, we're having some discussions that we want, the city has requested three years of refunds starting October and going back, plus the charges, the overbilling, the overpayments that we've made from October year to date. So we should have an additional eight months, seven, eight months of overbuilding credits in this year, so.
And is that in the budget currently?
The, what's currently in the, in the budget is the electricity charges as they were at the historical number. So we, we've been able to pay that. Now, we've seen some increases where we didn't budget for, was that 5% increase that we, we, we all got due to the Empower Maryland charges? So we didn't budget for that. And we also have seen an increase in electricity consumption. So that's hitting our, our utility expense. But to get to your question, yes, we can fund it from cash reserves. Further, we have this refund that we are gonna get from Pepco. We're gonna get some refund. Is it going to be the 87,000 that we had negotiated already and agreed to? In other words, it's gonna be less or more? There's some, some room in that. What we, I had anticipated using that refund as a, a, using that money towards the acquisition of the streetlights. Because we've been, we had already budgeted the utility expense for the current year. We were, we were expecting to see an immediate reduction to our street, uh, city's streetlights billing. So that would generate some savings in the current year and we will use any refunds towards, by, towards the purchase of the lights. That hasn't happened, it's been, the, the project's been delayed so long. Every, every month I get a feeling that, oh, we're getting near and near and then. And something happens.
That, that issue with S H A and responsibility for lights, that's something we need to work with our delegates and Senator to get them. Say they do have some authority in working with state agencies. Okay, so there you have it. So kind of pivoting now to any other modifications to the very section, I think, is there more to be said on this?
On this section?
I don't think so.
No, I was just noting that this fifty four thousand, 200 is, would now go to the, to the fund balance.
Right, the fund balance. The fund balance.
Oh, well, well, it'll be, well, we have twenty one thousand, yeah.
We, we already know that we're, we're not gonna have the revenue that we are expecting, particularly in waste collection. But that's not starting July 1st. So if council, you know, hands it over to us, we'll, we'll find a place for the fifty four thousand dollars.
Yeah, no doubt, and that, that's, that's high and uppermost in my thinking, you know, just the future, what, what's going to be happening over the next year with the revenues. I, I think we need to be really, really conservative in what the, the way that we're going with projections and, you know, funding, everything that's essential, everything that we possibly can, but also trying to, I mean, the city manager has, has given us such a tight budget to begin with. So, you know, I think it's our responsibility to keep it as lean as we possibly can. Ms. Gaiman and Mayor Protem.
Yeah, just wondering if, if based on that, would you be okay with reducing the waste collection amount, the increase that we're planning? A hundred thousand dollars that we may or may not get, would, could we reduce that down to 50,000? And so it'd be less revenue coming in, just to acknowledge.
Well, and that could be that, I think if we can talk about that next, I think there's more to discuss on that topic and this might give us some wiggle room on that.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Pompey.
I was just gonna say, if, if we have this remaining, this remaining fifty four thousand dollars, can we use some of that money to restore some of the recreation funds that were requested?
Well, we could do that, we could restore some of the cuts, the reductions to Green Belt cares as well. I mean, they, they took a pretty good hit. Public safety, on the other hand, we, we actually increased their funding by almost a million dollars.
It's a contractual obligation.
Yeah, it's, it's all about the people. Mayor Protem.
Well, I guess two things to point out, cause I think in the, in the, the list of the, the requests that came up at the different work sessions, there is also the note of the request from the public hearing on April 28th of eighteen thousand to continue diversity, equity and inclusion efforts that would go into administration. Now, I think that, that was a resident request, but I don't know if there were specific projects. I don't know that, I don't know, Mr. Summeron, if you had a chance to talk to, to Ms. Smith about what that money would be used for or how, if that's the right amount. Again, it was a resident request rather than a staff request, but that is the only other one that I note here as being sort of a outstanding amount requested.
Yes, that's correct, the resident requested that amount. Internally, we looked at our D E I efforts and we're making, we're making some changes how we're approaching the work. We, particularly amongst the executive team, the senior management team, we've embraced the idea that the D E I work also resides in all of us collectively as a senior management team and individually as department heads of our, our prospective departments. So we're doing that, that, doing D E I work within the senior, senior management team. Further, Ms. Alvarez and Dr. Park has joined the National League of Cities work group, remind me. It's the Community Engagement Initiative, which is doing D E I work and the work group is going to, to look at D E I practices for cities. And so Ms. Alvarez and Dr. Park are, are part of that work group and will be bringing those practices to the organization.
That's great, you know, N L C has been a leader, in the lead for the past six or seven years, actually. Diversity, Equity and Inclusion, various iterations, so that's good. Okay, let's see, anything else on your mind, Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I wanna talk about the, 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 the solid waste issue because I think the, what we have in the budget is proposing an increase, which I think the budget speculates actually July 1st, but, but realistically, we knew that wasn't going to be, that wasn't probably going to have. I know, I know. But, but, so I think, so I, having some, some further conversations with, and I think you remember Kristen Brown, who's from the, the Zero Waste Organization, and of course, John Lippert, who is, and, and Tom from the Green Aces. But so I think that, I think some of the things that Green Aces had presented were actually speculating sort of a different level of, of required funding with like, with, sort of comparing to a $350 increase, which is not what's in the budget. So I think what, what Green Aces is hoping, as they presented, was that we could figure out how to cover the, 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 food scraps pickup as well as switching to the pay as you throw. But I think, again, as I said earlier, based on the conversations with G H I, I think probably nothing can really happen until January 1st. So this is the, sort of an updated, this is similar to the table, if I can share, Ms. Gaiman. Similar to the table that was in, that was in Green Aces' recommendation document. But this one is adjusted for a slightly different expectation, so it, it speculates, it's, so the budget need now is 336. So we have to match what's in the budget now, which is, which was speculating that 336 fee increase. And then this convenience price of 366, which I think is slightly higher than, than what Green Aces had proposed, but is still about what the county is charging. And hopefully I did this right, Kristen. I, what I did, just, so I put in the inputs, the, the right thing, the, the things here, so I'm hoping that that's where, that's where I was supposed to do that. And so I guess, so then the question, I think the, the expectation is if 50 to maybe 60, 50 to 60% of people choose to opt in, you, at, 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 for example, a 220 or 200 rate, that gives us a little bit of a surplus, which then, I guess, I think the challenge now is figuring out if we, we, we will need half of that. So that the, the deficit proposed in the city budget, the, the subsidy from the general fund was, I think, actually 119,000, right? So half of that, so for six months, no, but that doesn't work, does it? No, you're right, that, that doesn't quite work, does it? My math doesn't totally work, because that was with the 336. Or does that? Yeah, but we would be keeping.
Please go to the microphone if you want to speak.
Hello? Yeah, so I think you're close. I mean, I think if, I think what's gonna happen is typically we like to have $200 differential, but we're squeezing that differential, so you're gonna get more people to opt out. So you're actually, I think, going to easily make that $25,000 surplus, maybe between 25 and 40,000 surplus, see what I'm saying? So I think you're really safe there. Now, as far as the fact that you can't start until January, I don't know how to help with that necessarily, but, but I think you're safe with the 366 and a 220. So a 220 for the base fee, but a 366 for opting out. So 366 is $30 more a year than the 336, so 750 a quarter if you're opting out of the program and you're not trying to save. If you're in the program, you're starting at 220, which is less than what you're paying currently today. And then you're paying as you go for what you use. So I think with that, you're gonna get a little more than 50% opt out. So that's gonna put you between 40,000 surplus and 25,000 surplus, which would give you a little bit of funding for the compost. So that's kind of where that is, yeah.
Yeah, well, and I guess the, and it's really only half of that, I guess, because it's half the year.
Now, the other thing that I was suggesting, and I don't know, again, could be worked out. I know that the, the one group can't start till January 1st, but you could start with the rest of the city, October, October 1st, which would make the rollout easier as well. You know, the education and the outreach, you could sort of start with part of the city, it's only a quarter, but it would make a little difference in your revenue. I don't, I don't know how you feel about that, could be a way to do.
So the implementation for this, it's, it's, it's a program, so part of it is actually working with the local stores to get them to carry the bags and what, to, to actually have these small and large bags. So that's gonna take some time to actually get those agreements in place, right?
Yes, that for October 1st is really easy, but the, the rolling out with the residents, it, it wouldn't be a bad idea to roll out half the city October 1st and half, and then the other half January 1st, because you could, you could do outreach, focused outreach in one area and then focused outreach in the other area. So it's not a bad, you know, some people will divide, you know, roll out there or, or lengthen their rollout time. So it's not necessarily a bad thing, it would give you a little more revenue.
Okay, so Mayor Protem, you're suggesting that, that we put this program into place and at the same time, that will reduce the subsidy for, for residents throughout the city, and that's something that we would see this year in the budget?
Well, yes, what, so what, what, and, and this is where I know, th, this is where I was trying to figure out a way to convey it in more of our actual budget terms, in terms of what our current revenues are from, from the, because if we have. So if we look at, so yes, I would like to propose that we implement it January 1st. What I'm trying to figure out is what the budget implications are for what to actually vote on on Monday. That's, that's, that's the challenge that, that I, that I personally am trying to, to, to figure out, because this is what, so, you know, this is, this is our solid waste page. So with the proposed increase to 336 a year, that's our deficit, 119. But of course, what we currently have is, is a lower rate.
Why not, can we, can we, City Manager Summeron, can you work with these numbers and work with Kristen to come up with something to, to place in the budget that you have confidence in?
Yes, and I think that we, you know, there's a lot of assumptions that we need to make. And I think we can, we can work on fractions, doing the estimating on fractions. So if the, under the proposal that Ms. Brown and, and Ms. Weaver just pointed out, the, the excess, the net income on a 12-month period will be between 40,000 and 25,000. If you have that, if you say your program's gonna start January 1st, that's six months out of the year, you just divide that, that net income by half. So you'd be looking at 20,000 to 12,500 as the net income and following. So you, in, so you, and then you think, well, well, what's gonna be the additional deficit that we need to make up in that six-month period? Well, it's 50,000, right? We, we increase the revenue by 100,000 if, if we started July 1st, but since we're starting, we're proposing, proposing to start January 1st, that's six months, that's half of the year, that's half of the increase of revenue that we anticipated. So half the 100,000, that gets you to 50,000. So you're gonna put in 50,000 to make up the deficit. You're looking at getting back by implementing the program in that fiscal year between 20,000 and 12,500. The difference of that, it reduces your additional deficit contribution by 50,000 minus the net income, gets you down to.
Anything that would reduce the deficit, the subsidy is a good thing. Now, aren't we sort of bypassing a step? We, we got the presentation in a work session from Green Aces, you know, about this program, but we didn't actually, you know, vote to implement the program and we didn't accept public comment from various, you know, G H I, G H I or other.
Well, we did.
Do we vote on that?
You have comments, but you have not, and not taken official council action to implement the program or either on a permanent basis or on a pilot basis, or do a rate change on the existing program as, as it's currently designed. So, so council, we need to do, take an action regardless, raise rates or change the program.
Mr. Robertson, I'm gonna put that.
I have the same question because, you know, I get comments from people in G H I, they're still wondering who's gonna keep track of who's in, who's out. You know, how many bags is this person throwing and that person throwing? So they're, they're saying, you know, are we gonna have to hire, you know, someone to take care of this or how's that gonna work? Because I, I can't give people an answer, cause I never, I didn't really hear a definitive answer to that.
Uh, yeah, it's, it's, it's easy. Those that opt out will get a big sticker, might be a big giant orange sticker that goes on their container. And the, we'll, we'll work with the public, with the crews to train them. The other thing that you're not thinking about is if you do reduce the trash, you do get some more efficiencies in your collection. So there's some other savings in there by doing this, but yeah, we'll, we'll work with the crews.
The people on the crew itself are gonna somehow keep track of each one.
Yeah, right now.
And how many bags each resident has put down or.
They, they don't have to keep track of, of that. They just, all they have to do is if, if you have an, say, just say orange, if you have an orange sticker, then you, you can have whatever bags you want. If you don't have an orange sticker, which they'll, they won't see the orange sticker, you'll have to use the proper bag. If, if someone is in violation not doing it, just like with any other violation, you have a list of other violations. Your crew will take a picture and note the address and that, they have a protocol for doing that now. We do find with these programs, you know, most people do it correctly because they've chosen which direction to do it in. If they're not doing it correctly, then you would just, they would, they would automatically be opted out of the program after maybe one or two warnings, depending on how we set it up, and, and then they would just get the remainder of the full fee, they'd have to pay the rest.
Yeah, my only concern personally is that, that we do communicate better to the, our customers than we have right now, because most people don't know anything about it or what we're doing or anything. So I think somehow we have to communicate that to people so they'll, they'll be able to, yeah, we'll be able to do it right, that's all.
Mayor, Mayor Protem.
So I think, and I think because we are not trying to implement it before January, that gives us a lot of time to communicate. And actually, it also means that we're not actually planning to change the fees for that time, so things sort of stay status quo for a while. So I think that, so, so I think what I would propose is that what we, we could, because we still. So I think that, so, so I think what I would propose is that what we, we could, because we still have to, we would still have to do an ordinance to change the fees, correct? And that requires a certain amount of notice and all of those things. So if we can work out the budget implications to vote on that and vote to, to start the process for a pilot, we still have to do the ordinances that require multiple readings. And we can, I think, at that point, also get feedback from residents. We did already hear from GHI, and I spoke to at least one GHI board member who was very skeptical, skeptical coming in and was like, oh, actually, no, that kinda makes sense. I get it now. Um, and hopefully that will be, that will be repeated hundreds of times with people as they, as they understand the program. But I think so, and I think so, I think the important elements to think about are that it is intended to be a pilot. If we don't, if it doesn't seem like it's working well after a year, we can go back and just have a straight, flat fee at whatever rate we feel is appropriate. But I think the other thing is if we've got a, so right now with the three thirty-six increase, we would, we're running a deficit, deficit of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars roughly from our, um, uh, from, from, that's in the budget. So if we have some of that for the first six months, but we actually run a surplus, we can actually still cover the compost food scrap pilot and not have any more of a deficit than we already have budgeted for. Um, so, so I guess what, what I would propose is that six months at the current rate, then a, the, the pilot for a save as you throw, um, starting January first, um, with including the city covering the continued food scrap pickup. Um, and so that, that's, that's, and maybe, yeah. Clearly, I'm not as good as working with some of these numbers as I thought I was, because I was trying to figure out how to do that. But that's what I would like to propose on Monday.
And we'll have to vote on that.
Right, right.
We'll have to vote on the program. And I don't, you know, I was trying not to get into too much of a back and forth. Uh, please, three minutes, please. Three minutes. Ms. Niesel, please.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to add that I was very, very skeptical of this program, and I wanted to take the opportunity while Ms. Brown is here to say that I tried to implement this at my home, and I realized that my kids were actually throwing some recyclables in the trash can. And so I have prepared an article for the News Review that's rather evergreen, I'm just gonna add some pictures of my trash, that can help with the education component, and I think that it's really going to help cut back on the amount of trash thrown out. And this is speaking as a single parent of three. I was able to do this without a lot of additional time, and I gave you a really, really hard time after the last meeting. So I just wanted to give you that feedback and say thank you for floating this program.
Three minutes, please.
Uh, John Lebert, uh, Thirty A Ridge Road, Green Aces and Green Team. Um, are you just gonna vote on going with save as you throw, or are you voting on the actual numbers? I'm surprised that the two forty base fee got dropped out. That's what we were recommending the last time. Two twenty or two forty, which would bring additional revenue in. Um, you have to realize that the system's not fair right now.
Yes.
So, um, this makes it more equitable and it's. Kristen Brown has found that, uh, where they implement it, there's about a forty-four percent decrease in material that goes to the landfill. So it's good for the environment, it's good for the city as well, because, um, most people would save on this, even at two forty that we found with the last, uh, chart that we presented. Um, additional question, um, in this budget, um, is the savings from the solar farm that is now operational included? That was a project that, um, our solar lead, uh, green team member Steve Skolnick started twelve years ago about, and served as the project manager for ye- the past number of years, and it finally became operational. Are those savings reflected in the budget?
I don't know, it's a good question. I'm very interested in touring the facility. Is, is it, it's online now?
It's online now. We received our first bill. It generated fifty-five thousand kilowatt hours. Um, and we're paying about eight cents on that, which is about a quarter less than what we're paying in the open market now. To your question, no, that had, those savings has not been factored into the, the budget. For good reason. We, our energy contract expired. We could not go out to market to secure a new energy contract, because the vendors wanted low profile and generation data of our solar field. So they would not price us a new contract, uh, for, for energy without that data. So we have, we are currently procuring energy on the open market. We're, we're buying directly from Pepco at their standard offering price. That's around fourteen cents, uh, a kilowatt hour. So where we won't know what a full energy cost, consumption cost would be until we have an energy contract. We can't get an energy contract and have a couple of months of generation from the solar farm.
And you don't know what the solar farm's gonna generate over a year, because it's gonna vary by month to month. Yes, I understand that. But can that go into our, um, sunny day fund and help fund the environmental projects that we, we are trying to implement here in Greenville?
I think that one of the things that council could, could consider in terms of creating a green energy or green initiatives fund is we're currently paying for green energy credits.
Right.
We're buying recs, so council could consider that instead of buying recs from the market, what if we take that money that we're spending on, on the procurement of recs and deposit that money or set it aside for green energy initiatives or green initiatives?
Yeah, that sounds fine with me.
But that would be a council.
Weave that into a twenty thirty plan with some goals, objectives for the next five years.
Okay, sounds good.
Mayor Protam?
And, and if it makes sense, we can put together, I can figure out how to put together two proposals at two, two twenty and two forty. I believe what Ms. Brown said about the two forty, she thought more people, that, that might be too high, you'd have too many people opting out. Am I interpreting that correctly?
So the two forty was originally done making the assumption that the opt-out was four hundred. So that changed the dynamic of what you're thinking, what, yeah, so I think we're, it could be two forty, but.
And if my colleagues are comfortable with, my colleagues are more comfortable with a higher opt-out rate, but I guess my thinking was that that, that would be a pretty big jump for people, um, to go up from what they're paying now up to that. Um, but if, 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 if people are willing to entertain the higher opt-out rate, I, I think that could make the numbers work better. But I just, that seemed like that, based on our conversations when we were talking about increasing the rate, that didn't seem to be as palatable, um, to everybody.
But the goal is to go up to three ninety-two, which is what the city is charged, right?
Yeah, but not, not until next fiscal year.
Initially in one, the first year, but still.
Yeah.
So, uh, I, I really feel like, uh, council needs to vote on this in a meeting, take an action. And we may be able to do that, depending on what you can pull together for Monday. This is a budget, so, I mean, if it's not gonna be implemented until October, there's, there's an argument to be made. We should just kinda go with the budget that we have. And when we get to that point and pass the resolution and put it in place, uh, then that action would, uh, be taken to effect. It would save some money off of what. So, hold on, uh, ma'am.
I, I have a response to that. Ma'am, Ms. Ms. Weaver showed me the numbers, sort of a preview, uh, of, of the numbers. And as we're looking through the number, there is no scenario that she worked out in her spreadsheet that is worse than what we have now.
Right.
Which is the, the subsidy of the solid waste.
Right.
Um, so just some information considered in line with what you said, we could approve the budget as it is now, and then in subsequent action, take a different step from an, from a budgeting perspective, where the only impact or the thing that we have to account for would be the, the hundred thousand dollar, uh, increase in revenue collection from fees.
Right.
That, we know that that's not happening, so it would be, we need to be responsible in that way. That I, I have to be responsible. I know I cannot collect that money.
Right.
So I have to make an allowance for that.
Okay, my, my concern, I guess, is just in terms of process, uh, kind of conflating the approval of this program with the passing of the budget at the same time. We'll hack it, hammer it out between now and Monday. It's about nine thirty right now. Uh, public comment, uh, Mr. Orleans, you have a question?
Thank you. Uh, as I've expressed in the past, I don't understand this program, but I probably support of it, of it, even though I don't think I will benefit, because I live in the apartments across the street. Uh, but whether or not I benefit from it, it's probably a good idea and should be done. My question is this, uh, the slide that Ms. Weaver projected on the screen looked very similar to the slides shown at the work session a few weeks ago. I don't know if it's the same slide or it's been changed, but I don't understand what the cost is in the budget. So if this is gonna be voted on Monday, I'd very much like to see what the expenditure line is for this program as compared to what was in the draft budget that was, as been previously discussed. Uh, while I've got the phone here, uh, the other change, some of the changes that have been requested be presented from work session to work session are in here, but it's not clear. Uh, I'm hopeful, since it's not been done yet and it's, what's not done for tonight, other than what's in here, which is hard to decipher, that on Monday night, there will be a complete sheet of all the proposed changes, adjustments, clarifications, corrections that have been developed over these work, budget work sessions, available before they vote. Thank you very much.
Well, well, thank you, thank you. That is something that we were able to do last year. Yes, please go ahead.
So there, there's two, two questions that you asked, uh, Mr. Orleans. One is on the expenditure side of how this program fits on the expenditure side. The expense, the program will have a positive impact on the budget. By that, we, these types of program overall reduce the amount of, of waste that goes into the, into the landfill stream. So overall, we should see a reduction in the tonnage that gets dumped at the land, at the landfill. That would reduce, expectedly reduce our tipping fee expenses. That's on the expense side. The program primarily affects the revenue side of the business. The base fee will be charged to all of the customers. So whatever council sets, whether it's two twenty, two forty, or three thirty-six, that fee is assessed to all the customers, uh, as part of the regular billing cycle. We're billing on a quarterly. All those customers get that quarterly billing. The additional revenue stream comes when the customer buys the bag. They buy the bag at the local grocery store, whatever business relationship is arranged with the partner. Um, it, the money can come from either the grocery store or the partner who's providing the bags. The grocery store orders it from the partner, the partner delivers it to them, they pay the partner, the partner sends us a check, or the grocery store sends a check. That's a business relationship that could figure out. But the, to your budget question, on the revenues, the program primarily affects how the revenue streams, uh, come in. Your second question is on the adjustments made to the budget. The, we have a four-hundred-page document with all the changes, because this year we did something different than last year. We provided the full budget documents to council with a link online that they could see our edits, they could see our comments, they can provide comments. And unfortunately, the only way I can make that available to you in whole is by printing the entire document. The Acrobat Adobe Cloud Suite does not create all the comments in a sheet and attach pages to it. So it can bring all the comments in a page, but unless you're seeing it linked back to the original, it's hard to export. However, Mr. George, Assistant City Manager, is working to provide that for the next meeting, the comprehensive list of all the changes.
Well, very good.
Did I miss anything on that, Ms. Gaiman? Okay.
Okay, uh, all right, uh, Mayor Protam?
I would note that a lot of those changes were very small things, like misspellings or, or, or inconsistencies in commas and things like that. So if you look at that document, it's gonna be, it's, it's, it's a lot of small things, at least the things that I put in.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead and, uh, wrap up this, uh, work session, final budget review. Uh, on Monday, we'll be, uh, actually voting on the budget. And in the past, we've, and I think what we're going to do, and we'll work this out over the next few days, is to kind of go through each section. So the, the items that we've discussed tonight that we need to vote on, we'll be able to, uh, take action on those first, then pass the budget. It's gonna take a, a super majority to pass the budget, so six of us, I believe, have to vote in favor during that. And as soon, if it passes, as soon as it passes, we'll have to, uh, approve resolutions to actually implement the budget. Did I say that correctly, City Manager Sumraun?
We, it's an ordinance, the.
An ordinance, I'm sorry.
What you need, a super majority is, is on suspending the rules.
Suspend the rules, yes.
Right, but the, but the ordinance itself, it requires a simple majority.
Uh, so that's what's coming up on Monday. There's some other items as well. Uh, Councilmember Poppy?
I'm just, no, looking at the agenda for tonight, and there's another thing on here, the Mellow Dog Park Water Line. I don't know if that's something we're gonna address.
Oh, oh, I'm so sorry.
I just don't want to skip that.
Yes, so to, so to a matter, Ms. Ms. Gaiman wants to do the overall budget review. The Dog Park Water Line, in a previous work session, uh, Councilmember Pope had requested that we reprice the cost of running a water fountain, a line for a water fountain at the Dog Park. The team engaged those contractors. That's what we expect to be the updated cost. Uh, Ms. Pope wanted to bring that to council for consideration. It's, it's in your packet. Should you wanna vote on it?
Appreciate it. Uh, Ms. Pope, would you like to speak on that?
Thank you, thank you. I do appreciate that, yes, I really do. I, I wasn't expecting any, any less, um, um, any lesser amount, quite honestly. But I do wanna find a solution to it, and we've been talking about this for so many years. So we're gonna have to find a solution for the water, for the Dog Park, for some kind of accessibility to water. Um, and we, we always say it, and we always waiting for feedback, and we're looking into it, and nothing happens. So of course, we're not gonna, I mean, this is just out of the question that we're spending a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Dog shelter almost.
Well, I wanna talk to your guy. I want the dog shelter for that much money.
Well, let me see what I can do. But, I mean, you know, it's just, it's just, I don't understand why it's so expensive, because the water, the water hookup is right outside the gates, basically. So I just don't understand, but, you know, I wanna keep it on the radar that we're gonna need some water for some dogs. Not everyone can, can, can bring their waters, especially the elderly people who come with the little dogs in the morning. They just can't look around the water. So we need to come up with at least some kind of solution. Um, and just like when I called last week, you know, the gates weren't adjusted, there were gaps in the gates, the, the, you know, the, the upkeep wasn't there. There was no, no mulch, nothing there. So I'm like, if this is our park, then we're gonna have to take care of it as we do with our other parks. And every year, I'm, I'm, I'm at the same, at the same space, and I'm saying the same thing.
Well, I, I, I'm sorry that that's the case. I know, you know, you, we, I received your, your complaints last week. We did have the team adjust the gates and, and, and take care of the, the field. With the, with the water line, there's one way to running the water line. It requires coming off that distribution line. That means digging it up, tapping into that water line and running it. Um, they are, we need the money to be able to do that, and we need council's authorization and funding to do that.
Well, that's not gonna happen, because I'm the only one asking for it, so I'm not gonna have any hopes that any of my colleagues will support me in that water line.
Hope springs eternal, right?
And, and, uh, you know, it, it's just, it is what it is. I'm asking for it every year. I understand that there's a lot, this is a lot of money, this is a lot more money than we can spend this year. I get it. But I also want to stress again that we need to have the upkeep of that Dog Park. We need to treat it as, it's, it's our park, we need to treat it as such. And there has to be some kind of solution, some kind of idea, what we can do to help out with the water in a safe way, especially in the summer months.
Hey, I have to tell you, I, I got a request from, uh, one of our residents, and they were interested in, uh, creating a second Dog Park someplace in the city. I haven't, uh, told them. We had, uh, we tried to do that. It was about eight or nine years ago.
Terry is already like.
And we got, we got some good suggestions, but then on, once we put them on the table, it was, people didn't, didn't want them in the locations that were put forward.
Unfortunately, yes.
Have to reply to the resident that asked. Just got that yesterday. Uh, let's see, we've got another comment here. Ms. Gaiman, then, uh?
I'm just so, I'm so excited about this, so I wanna just, I just wanna reiterate, um, with the revised numbers that you have given us tonight, revenue will be at forty million, two hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred dollars. And expenditures will now be at forty thousand, one, forty thou, forty million, sorry. One, oh, no, not forty thousand, forty million, one hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars, leaving seventy-five thousand, eight hundred dollars, um, remaining. So I'm really excited to say that. So I'm really excited to say that.
Well, that's nice. So I would put in a plug for a splash park now. But that's really a high-priced ticket item. You know, if, I don't ask for much, right? I really don't.
You just want expensive things.
Well, wait a minute. Yeah, well, you know, if I do something, I do it right. You know, I don't ask for much. I don't ask for little piddly stuff. No, I want something like FAM, you know, like a splash park or, you know, the water thing. So, so, you know, I mean, eventually somebody's gonna grant me something, I'm sure. But thank you. I know you're trying the best you can. I know you're doing, and you're listening to me. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, we'll take, uh, one more.
I, I, I promise this is the last question. So I'm, I'm seeking your permission to reduce the waste collection $100,000 we have for revenue to $50,000, which will use some of, will use most of this $75,000. Or do you prefer to just have it this way?
Come, why don't you go ahead and incorporate that?
Okay.
Put it in red or something.
Okay.
Okay. We're gonna use that for what?
Uh, to cover the, the, the transition time for the pay-as-you-throw. Save as you throw. Whatever, whatever we'd settle on, actually, I'll.
So there's a $100,000 increase in the revenue for 2026 for waste collection. I will reduce that down to $50,000, which will reduce this amount. Yeah, by $50,000, yes. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Jervasi, you have a comment?
The, uh, two things. One is, uh, to echo what Bill was concerned with. I couldn't read the numbers anyway, and I wonder if there's any way to fullscreen these sheets because you, you cannot make them out even that far away. So we had a fullscreen on there, we could probably see it. Yeah, so the other thing is, uh, about the, uh, Dog Water Park Water Line, uh, $155,000. I think you could put a cistern, a little solar-powered, uh, pump, and, uh, keep the doggies watered all year long. I don't think it would cost anywhere near that kind of money. Uh, so that's all I wanted to say.
Why don't you jot that down and give us a, an estimate or something? With your professional expertise, which you do have, I'd love to see it. Okay. Okay, so at this time, let's go ahead and transition, uh, to the calendar. And, uh, Mayor Potem has it up on our screen. Uh, I do want to add something. Uh, we have a, uh, on the 4th, there is nothing scheduled. And I was thinking about this, and I, I think I'd like to schedule an executive session to, uh, talk about some personnel issues. We had something scheduled about a month ago, and we deferred it. And I think that would be a good use of that time. Wednesday, the 4th.
Um, there was.
What do you think?
Well, yeah, I mean, if, if you're gonna, if we need to do it, we need to do it. I think there was a, if we didn't have a work session, I was gonna go to the, um, there was an information session about the South Side Express Lanes down in Oxon Hill, looking at what time it is and seeing if, um, the, well, the public hearing starts at 6:00, so, yeah.
So if we started at 7:30?
If we started at our usual time, I could at least go to the first part of it.
Okay.
My niece graduates that afternoon, so it would be very difficult for me to make it back up. She lives in Southern Maryland to make it back up here for an executive session, so. I will be on business travel. I can tra, I can call in, but I will not.
Okay, well, it sounds like half of council's not available. I, I think it's kind of important, but.
I'm not gonna miss my niece's graduation, so.
Okay, uh, Mayor Potem, why don't you?
Um, I think the only, I mean, I, I don't know that, so we have, uh, I, this, I think, this doesn't go through July, but at least shows the budget adoption meeting. It sounds like right now we don't have anything scheduled on the, on the 4th. Advisory chairs on the 9th. Um, and I think one, one thing thinking about that, have we asked the advisory ch, uh, chairs for, you know, a quick update, like a slide with sort of their, their, their highlights for the year yet?
I, I have not. I'll get to that this, this week.
I have feedback from you and from, um, uh, Councilmember McKinney on agenda items for that, so.
And I think.
I will get to that this week.
And I think hoping to streamline that a little bit if the advisory boards are prepared with sort of slides that have, you know, top three things they did this year, top three goals for next year, just to try to, to streamline that conversation a little bit.
So how about the 11?
Um, well, that would, it, we can get to that.
No, actually, we, we do. That's our legislative retreat.
Yeah, some of those, that might not be updated. So I guess, and a question that came up about the legislative retreat. So that'll be one, um, where we're, uh, we, we could do it here in the council chambers. I think, uh, Mr. Sommaron mentioned that staff did sort of, uh, went over to the College Park Aviation Museum. So it was just slightly off-site, but not too far away. Um, and that was a suggestion that came up. I don't know whether others think, I, I mean, I, I don't know that I have a problem with just doing it here in the council chamber, but.
We could certainly do it here. We could do it in some other city facility. Get down to Public Works.
That's true.
Actually, I have a.
Do they have a conference room, though? Oh, no, you mean the, the College Park Museum. Yeah, I, I have been there. I haven't. I didn't pay attention to their conference facilities.
I wouldn't wanna take on too much of a cost.
No.
We can do it here, too. We can do it here, too. It's not a big deal. Let's just do it here.
Okay, that was just an idea that came up.
No, it was a good idea, but I don't mind.
Regular meeting on the 16th, um, Board of Elections on the 18th, um, Maryland Municipal League, um, Summer Conference, the 22nd to 25th. So no meetings on the 23rd and 25th. Uh, and then Economic Development, Retention and Expansion on the 30th. Um, this doesn't include July. Uh, the 4th of July is a Friday, so that doesn't interfere with any of our meetings unless we want to change the scheduling of any of those. But this, 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 this was the list from the last council meeting. I know Ms. Anderson has a more updated one, but this is the one that I had access to. So I don't know. That's something we could talk about later. That is over a month away.
Thank you. So, I mean, we could do that executive session on the, at the end of the advisory board chair meeting on the 9th. Would, uh, that be difficult for anyone to do?
I think if, that, that's fine if you think it's something that needs to happen, uh, soon.
Yeah, I, I'd like to have that happen soon. Okay. Okay, are there any other information items?
I have one.
I thought you said you didn't have.
I didn't, but then I thought about it. I, I thought about it. The, uh, the animal shelter, the repairs are done. We're gonna host a little open house on Monday, 5 to 6.
Okay.
Very cool.
Fairness.
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. It's been a very productive, uh, work session tonight. Looking forward to Monday and.